Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Prising?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
Rechner?
Here.
Henry?
High school.
I need approval of minutes and reports of the police department engineer, code office, health department, public works, and the planning commissioner.
Eister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Any particular comment on the agenda items in front of you? Anybody? Okay, we're not going to have an SRI update today, but we are going to talk a little bit about redevelopment authority because there's tons of stuff happening there. Just want to go down and do a few things. The Seventh and Packer Street project, we had the community gardens last year, I think everybody agrees that, well, that's a mess, so we're going to clean that up and what we have is we have looking at now planting grass in it, cleaning that hillside off up there, it pretty much collects a lot of litter all the time. We have Lloyd's Landscaping looking at it, we have Kobe Lighto coming in looking at some sidewalks, so we're going, I think the redevelopment authority is going to tackle that itself and see, you know, between, I don't, I'm not going to call it a park, but we'll see what we're going to end up doing with it. We want to make it so it's fully maintenance, it's not big enough to build anything on and we're working on that.
How soon are you going to do that here?
Well, we have.
It's been cleaned up.
Yeah, it's been cleaned up now.
Did you ever get that mic?
No, didn't get it.
Okay.
It looks so much better already.
Yeah, the top, I've got some trees down in the back and that ground cover, I never remember what they call that stuff, but there's certain different types and I saw Skip a little bit, he said he thinks that stuff will take off, so. What I'm trying to say is we'll put a plan together here in the next, so what it's going to look like. Clean that corner up, that's just a bare-looking corner and there's a lot of traffic up and down there and we want to create some way that people can walk down each street. There really is no sidewalks or anything, it's pretty steep, so we're looking at, that's why we have the concrete guy looking to see if we can devise something so people can get up and down even better. I wanted to mention 325, 327 Market Street. If you're not aware, that's the site that the Degustine Foundation with the Northumberland County Historical Society, that's the property that they're going to put all that historical, the county's going to be involved, et cetera, et cetera. And I went to the Historical Society and, you know, we always talked about the historic library in the city of Sunbury and it sounds like we're going to be able to sit down and talk with them. They need to go through that building and see how much they're going to use, what's standing or take part of it down or what it may be, but it looks like that's going to be the development of the historical part for the county, for the city. It's actually owned by the Historical Society, not Northumberland County, that's a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of people don't understand. So that will be owned by, like I say, the Historical Society and we're going to get together in the near future to see how we, the best way to lay that out and how we can get our section of it for, like I say, for the turbines and the other things from the city. On May the first and May the eighth, there's five properties that are going to be auctioned off from May first. I can hear a quick, 121 Julia Street, 108110 Edison Avenue, 414, 416 North Second. I'm sure we have copies of this down the stairs. 1036, 1038 Lyons and 217, 219 North 12th. We start at 5 o'clock and we just schedule like half an hour, so we just go from one property to the next to the next. On May the eighth, we have 702 Chestnut, 310, 312 South Front, 139, 141 Church, 128, 130 South Street, and 152 Bainbridge. Some of them have.
You're not, what are you going to do there? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, May the eighth.
What, you're going to auction that off?
What, the five that I just read?
The last one on Bainbridge?
152 Bainbridge, yes.
No, I got good things inside. Historic buildings and all.
Well, we're not tearing it down, that's what we're auctioning, that's it. And somebody's, and that is a very nice property, that's not going to take much to fix it up, so that, you know, there's a bigger reserve on that, so hopefully if somebody buys that, they're going to hang with it.
And there's, I think, four different ones, at least four that want to buy it, but.
What about 146?
146 Bainbridge? That's not on the list for there, it might be on our main list, but this is the tenant we moved up. And we're going to address a couple here in the, when we get down into the business, we're going to add a couple more to it, but. Just like there's a 613 Catways Avenue and a 416 South Fourth Street, letters have been sent out to them, given them 60 days to upgrade. So the process is moving along. Also, Jamie was at our last meeting from Cedar Cog about redevelopment authority choosing two or three properties for demolition. Again, none of these that we're auctioning off, these are all respectable properties and we won't be talking any demolition for them, but in the future we will be. I just want to let everybody know there's a ton of stuff happening with redevelopment authority and, so, hopefully everybody comes, you can get ahold of Cheryl in the office, get an email on there, they'll send you an email every time we have a list like this coming about, invite you there, I think she notifies you twice, maybe like a week or so ahead and then a couple of days ahead, so. Get on that list if you're not on the list, if you're interested at all about getting to the meetings or getting to the auctions themselves. Well, let's, let's do the two, the resolution.
Do I have to listen to this?
Yep.
Okay. The first resolution that, for Goodwill City is related to the auctions coming up. What we want to do is have a resolution passed that approves and affirms the public auctions that the city of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority will be having. I recognize that the proceeds from those sales will go back into the city of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority's bank account in order to be used for future related property projects. And notice on this resolution, we kept in the city clerk's office. As an exhibit to the resolution, there is a list of the 10 properties that the mayor already read off that will be auctioned at the May first and May eighth auctions with that resolution.
Need a motion to accept?
Put a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Shipman?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Eister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Okay, and the second resolution that we have for the city of Sunbury Council here is we have three new properties that have been recommended by the code office to be declared public nuisance properties so that we can afford with them. Those three properties are 113 Chestnut Street, 449 Race Street, and 116 South Fourth Street. By declaring them public nuisances, what will happen next is a notice will be placed on the property that gives the property owners 10 days to bring their properties up to code or at least contact the code office to hopefully remedy the blighted condition the code office found.
Any questions? Need a motion to accept?
I'm motion.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes. That's it for redevelopment authority tonight. PA DOT closure, Dale?
Yes, the Sunbury River Festival, they'd like to close Front Street Park Market for three days and the Goodwill Host in conjunction with their carnival, they'd like to be on the code office part of Market Street.
Right, so the River Fest is August 15th and 16th and the Goodwills is July the 19th, correct? That's a motion, need a second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Dale, hire DPW part-time seasonal workers?
Yes, we, I'd like to, we hire five part-time seasonal workers for the summertime, it is in the budget for it. We discussed that when we did it before, when the budget was done, so money's there.
Need a second?
Second.
Eister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Adopt PA Act 90, Jim?
Yes, we adopted Act 90 prior, there was some information that was not included, so we did a revision of Act 90 and just made a motion thinking adopt the new version of Act 90, which is for blighted properties.
Just let me add to that, that's what we passed before, because the county asked us to update some language that they needed and like I say, we passed it before, now this is the final language in there. Do we got a second?
Second.
Prising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Eister?
Rick, hard approval, 343 Chestnut?
Yeah, April 2nd, the heart that on, on the request of a Toby Rochelle Gerling at 343 Chestnut Street to repair their front porch and it, the porch was starting to crumble, it ripped a little bit and Hart gave them some regulations that they must abide by as far as putting up the balusters on the porch and they approved it last Tuesday, so I'm just making a motion that we agree with their decision.
And these folks do know about the new sidewalks, right, doing the repair work, is that the one on the left-hand side, Little Block?
It's on the lower side of the street, the lower side.
Okay, but still sidewalks, just to make sure they know.
They're not going, they're just, actually all they're doing is just, the brick columns are starting to tear.
Okay, I'll second that.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister? Prising?
Yes. Spoke of services Cedar Cog 2014. Oh, they continue using Cedar Cog. This is the, a lot of years ago we've happened to be using, I'll have it out, we got your project mentioned, it's been at least 2007, 2008. What they did is give us a breakdown to continue their administration, it's actually less than last year. And I don't believe anybody's can say, you know, Cedar Cog's doing a wonderful job for us, so. Need a motion to accept the spokes of services for the CDVG projects?
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Approval to pay invoices, John?
Yeah, a couple other things, Mr. Mayor, but just a quick thing. In your packets you have some procedures that we have sort of rewritten a little bit, just the, working with Kevin to bring some of the procedures in the treasurer's office up to 2014. These two that have been completed have to do with year-end check processing and city debt principal interest payments and we don't need to approve these, excuse me, just like to make council aware. Also, I put the first quarter statements for each of your departments at your place tonight with 25% of the way through the budget cycle. I ask you to please take a look at your, at your sheets and just take a look at maybe line items that may be over 25%. Keep in mind we have an obligation to travel within the budget. We have some invoices to pay, before we do that, I'd like to just report that the lease of the street sweeper has been paid and so that's one less obligation that we can have as a city. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular payments of $150,545.97 and the liquid fuels pay bills of $41,128.59.
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Tax exoneration, John?
We have, we have five individuals, one deceased, one non-resident, and three low-income that have applied for exoneration and make a motion that we exonerate these individuals under the taxes.
Eister?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, there's something going on, John, since you moved the office back and things have changed, I think you're doing an excellent job because I think you just stepped up to the playing that off.
I do want to add, I missed a note up here on the redevelopment authority. Right now we're negotiating the new contacts with Sunoco and Burger King, so hopefully, I guess, in the near future we should be able to, I don't know when that project's actually going to start, it's to be done this year though, right?
Of course, yeah.
Yep, so we'll get you more details than that, but we have, I want everybody to know that that's moving forward. Audience comment? Do we have any audience comment anything in particular? Yes?
Yes, um, I have a few things here. Regarding the minutes of May 13th of last year, I had a few questions for Jim when we were talking about the WPA wall, if you may remember all that. And at the time you said that there had not been a bid that had gone out to the individuals that was going to be doing the WPA wall.
I'm sorry, repeat that again would you please?
At the time, you had, it says here in the minutes, that your response was that you did not know who was going to be doing the WPA wall.
Don't be hitting my, I was a bid jet, I'm sorry.
Correct, correct. Question is, I read recently and I've seen the equipment there is, why would you select HRI, who is a paving company? They don't appear to be.
Who ever told you they're a paving company?
That's what it says on the website.
Well, because you're in the paving department, it looks like. HRI is massive, they're nationwide. Mr. Saxon, you looked up under Williamsport, is that the location that you looked?
State College.
State College, okay, I'm sorry.
But in the article here on the Daily Item, February 24th, 2014, it says that the contract was won by low bidder, HRI, a paving company headquartered in State College.
I didn't write that.
I understand that, you didn't write that, but wouldn't it be your responsibility to make that correction if Rick Dandies did not understand what you were trying to put forth?
I'm sorry, what's the next question?
Well, there are a few things here, even in the minutes, that if, one of the other things you had mentioned was explain this money is from FEMA and is for engineering, when we were talking about the $30,500. That wasn't for engineering, that would have been for the actual repair, would have not.
I don't think there's any extraneous what it can be used for. For my knowledge, recovery.
But you had, and I also mentioned here on February 24th that the wall had repairs done to it over the years, but in 2011 it failed an inspection, Eister said. This time we want to do things right, correct the problem for the future.
That's correct.
Okay. But going back to 2013, in an article that was done by, written by Mark Lawrence, it was mentioned here regarding his opponent Julie Burches. Prising said, "It is a shame with the internet and the social media, voters cannot always decipher what is fact and what is fiction." Regarding the Sunbury flood wall, Prising says, "Despite what Burches is saying, the flood wall is in excellent shape and residents are safe." Now, it seems to be a little conflicted here about what's really going on with that wall.
Well, I think the problem is, are you referring to the WPA wall or the flood wall?
Well, how did, how did Mr. Prising refer to it?
He referred to the flood wall, so that's the concrete wall. And we were just discussing the WPA wall, which was installed in 1937.
Correct.
Handling stone wall. Which one are you referring to now?
I was referring to the WPA wall.
Okay.
And in my article and in the pass out that I've had during the campaign, I was referring to the WPA wall.
Okay.
So why would he have referred, Mr. Prising, to the flood wall?
Because we just got done fixing it and telling people that it was, and I honestly don't remember what I did back in March, what'd you say, what? May 13, 2013?
May 21st, 2013.
But I'm sure I was talking about the new, the good job they did in the new wall. What's, what's your question, Yavon?
Well, it seems to be conflicted here about what is really wrong with the wall.
Well, the WPA wall failed in 2011, which was repaired in 1997, okay?
Jim, why don't you explain what the WPA wall does to the same wall?
Well, Julie knows because she showed pictures of it.
Yes, I know what it does. The other problem is, what are you really doing about infrastructure regarding those types of things that affect the wall? Like the flooding within the city.
Wait a second, that's, that's two different issues.
Well, and what affects the other though?
Well, let's finish up with the WPA wall.
Okay.
Do you have any more questions left to answer?
I do not, not at this moment.
Now we're going to the flooding, first of all, we will handle the flooding, there's a flood control system, which is municipal authority.
Well, then why, somebody should be here to respond to questions then.
Well, no, you go to their meetings, they're held every Tuesday, every other Tuesday, I believe it is, 2nd, 4th, 2nd, no, 1st and 3rd, or 1st and 3rd, sorry.
But, but one thing affects the other, right? The WPA wall was affected by the flooding within the city.
That's correct, but they handled the flood control system at municipal authority to, when they're there reading, ask them the questions. We don't handle that in-house here, I'm sure that you're aware of that.
Yes, I know, yes, I know. It just seemed that there was a lot of conflicting facts here for the citizens.
I think some of the facts were become misunderstood because of the WPA wall, some people refer that to a flood wall, which was laid up in 37 after the 36 flood.
Yes.
And theoretically, back in those days, they probably called that a flood wall, analyt flood wall. It was to protect the shorelines of the Susanne River, the city of Sunbury, is why it was done. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Your questions?
Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Saxton, I'd like to address a few issues. At the last Sunbury City Council meeting, I addressed the camera project the city has undertaken. And that's why the company that was the low bidder for the camera purchase was not the company that supplied the cameras and was told that those bidders had removed themselves from the bidding process. Further investigation revealed to me that the two lowest bidders removed themselves from the bid process and this led to Genesis Security Integrations, the next lowest bidder. I stated at the last city council meeting that the camera bid should have been at that point rebid. The city chose to purchase the robotics cameras from Genesis. I contend the city should have rebid, but since they did not rebid the project, I'm asking how it is that the bid from Genesis was $1,215 per camera? But the invoices from the city show that the city paid Genesis $1,275 per camera and that is more than the bid price. The city received lesser cameras than the bid required and paid more, and I'm curious as to why that would be.
I have no idea what you're talking about, we'll look into it for you.
The city appears to have failed to comply with the bid threshold and bid requirements.
It's your opinion we failed it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Invoices show the city of Sunbury purchased a torch portable camera system for $39,000 from Genesis. No bid exists for this purchase, as none was supplied in response to right-to-no requests submitted to the city. This $39,000 expenditure far exceeds the bid requirement threshold and why did the city not bid on that system?
What'd you call it, a torch?
Yes, that too is listed in your invoices that were given to me through the right-to-no request.
Okay.
There appears to have been no bid for the purchase of tripod rapid camera deployment cameras for the amount of $43,000 by the city. Again, no records were supplied in response to right-to-no requests for this purchase. The city, but again, gave violation of bidding and I'm referring, when I say no, no records were supplied, I'm saying no bids. I can't find any, any reference to that purchase being bid at $43,000. Invoices also indicate the city purchased 15 excess servers at $1,750, were a total of $26,000. I can't find a bid for that either in my right-to-no request returns and that, those particular servers at $1,750 can be purchased on the internet for $1,350 and I'm curious why you guys paid $1,750 when they're barely available for $1,350 and it is the same. It's also curious that Global, the people that pulled out, and I realize they pulled that bid away, were offering them for much less, which probably should have learned due to the fact that they could be had for much less money than paid. I have a question on the streetlights at Fourth and Market that the city paid $9,745 for, have those been installed yet?
You mean the cameras and the lights?
I, I was particularly talking about the lights, but yes, I know the cameras are to be integrated with those lights.
No.
They're not installed.
No.
Okay, when might that happen?
Well, they should be here in about the 20, this month they're supposed to be delivered.
Why is the WPA wall project being done in the height of the flood season?
Well, they have a fiber down there, I know you don't live in the area, we have a fiber down there. And they raise it every year and they defloat it every year.
They flave it.
That's right. So we got spring and fall to work with it.
Understand that.
Right, when was the last one, 2011?
2011.
Wasn't one.
In the fall.
Okay. So it's like flipping the coin, we felt we were more safe this year, so we did it now. Now we would have done it in the fall, you probably would have had the same question if it would have flooded. So I, I, Drew was a no-win situation, the question you have, let's be honest about it.
Well, historically there has been high water in the spring many more times and many more floods, so.
Oh, that's obvious, I'll give you that one.
So it would make sense to do it in the fall, but we'll not belay the point, thank you. The original cost of the ready rock replacement for the WPA wall replacement, and this is the original estimate, was $391,120 for a 670-foot wall of 12 feet in height, and that was in 2013. Now in 2014, the project has escalated to $394,000 for just 525 feet of wall, is that correct?
The numbers are correct, the footage is incorrect at the 600, because there's not 600 foot there, so it's obvious, it was an error when they wrote that.
Well, the bid that the city received, which I have a copy of right here, it says 620 feet and they were willing to do that for $391,000.
Yep, sorry, that was an estimate, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
Estimate, okay. Did you read the bid?
No, I didn't, I'm, okay.
The bid's correct. Estimates are sometimes not accurate, as we know.
Well, it's only an increase of $3,000, but it's a 35% increase in cost over the original estimate and I, in one year, I think a 35% increase is exorbitant. The new wall is being constructed on a base of crushed limestone. That wall, I believe, is going to have a difficult time standing up to multiple flood events.
Okay, Mr. Saxton, all the other walls that have been installed is on crushed limestone.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm no engineer, you might be, I don't know.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
But neither of us is, pardon? Neither of us is an engineer.
Thank you. Do you know how many engineers have looked at that project?
I'm sure quite a few. I've looked at the project and the project is starting to shift already.
Okay.
If you go down and look at it, and look at the lineup, you'll see the wall is starting to go like this in only a matter of a few years.
Okay.
Next question.
Excavation is occurring against the concrete wall and scrape marks are visible on the concrete wall. Having machine brushing against the wall could cause damage to it and I don't believe you're supposed to dig more than 20 feet from that wall or any closer than 20 feet. You can see the concrete wall where dirt's been piled up.
Mr. Saxton, let's stop there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, where have engineers been here? All kind of engineers have worked it, have soiled, did all kind of testing about 10 years ago before the project started. You know, I know what you're getting at, because everybody has taken every precaution to make sure it is done properly.
Well, all right, we'll see.
Well, by the way, I just want, you know, I'd be very concerned about the WPA wall and the flood in the city of Sunbury. If it does come over the wall, roughly two-thirds of the city of Sunbury is affected.
Yes.
A lot of property owners right here will be affected.
Yes.
Including myself.
Yes.
And you, Mr. Rechner, okay? I appreciate the fact you're really concerned about our property value, I really do. But, you know, we have studied it and, like I said, all these engineers, so. What's the next question, let's get past the wall.
Okay. The city claimed during the Sunbury City Council meeting in May 13, 2013, that the WPA wall passed its inspection. And just before the primary election, Mayor Prising stated in the Daily Item that the. And just before the primary election, Mayor Persing stated in the Daily Item that the flood wall is in excellent shape and the residents are safe. We've already discussed that difference.
Now, a quick question, not to interrupt you, but...
Sure.
Are you sure these facts are correct?
Sure.
You said the flood wall was inspected. Now, once again, we have a flood wall, and we have the WPA wall.
I said the WPA wall.
Okay, and who said that? Who said it?
Well, I'll tell you. These are minutes from your meeting, Mrs. Burches stated that the Buchard corn, that Buchard corn said the damage is subsequent to the stabilization work that was done, and that there are four different locations that are in need of repair. She wants to know why the thirty thousand, five hundred dollars isn't being used to repair it. It was explained this money is from FEMA and is for engineering. That is not correct, and you made that statement, Mr. Saxton.
Well, I was in error.
You were in error because I have the FEMA right here.
I apologize on my deep heart, thank you.
Mr. Saxton, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you do anything positive with your time? I mean, do you, you volunteer to help young people and so forth, or do you serve on any nonprofit forums, or, or do you do any, uh, volunteer work in the community? I mean, you're so concerned about this, I just wondered, uh, the magnitude of the, of the service that you do for our community. Do you do any of those things?
In this community? Yeah. I have, I have been working to try to help this community for quite some time.
Oh, really?
If you wanna know about my past...
No, I don't wanna know, but I'm talking about Sunbury.
Yeah.
I'm talking about Sunbury, have you done any, like, what are you doing now to, in Sunbury? Are you doing any volunteer work, are you working with any nonprofits, are you doing any charitable work? I mean, you have lots of time, seems to me that if you're so concerned, you would be doing all this. What are you doing now to make Sunbury a better place?
Right now, I'm doing what I would do to make Sunbury a better place, but that's your opinion, and I'm not, that is your opinion.
Have you, have you sponsored a basket for SRI, um, to put out the bullets, that would be a nice thing for you to do. We'd take your two hundred dollar check tonight.
I, I'm sure you would. I don't believe that the baskets are a good investment for Sunbury, those two hundred dollars could be used for many other things in the community that would help it.
Well, since it's all, it's all gifts, it's from people like yourself, uh, if you would just give a gift to, uh, the city, you're not paying for any. See, it would be nice if you would help us out and do something for them.
Well, Mr. Shipman, I am helping you out, you just don't realize it.
Sorry.
All right, well, that's your opinion.
And it's your opinion that I should be doing this in a different manner.
All right, address counsel, are you done?
No, Mr. Mr. Easter had asked, thank you, asked a question, and I'm in the process of answering it. So, there was no confusion, Mr. Easter, in these minutes about Mrs. Burches's question about the WPA wall and what we were referencing, nor that the thirty thousand, five hundred dollars was to be used to repair the wall. It was unnecessary to plunge the city into further debt when you had thirty thousand, five hundred dollars. You also had an engineering report here from...
We already discussed this, I already apologized for making the error, how much time do you want this, now? And, oh, let me add something now, while you're reading your notes there.